Добрый день. Меня зовут Пётр Дудкевич. Я из Канады, из一所й университета, и я член Валдайского клуба. Я работаю в этом клубе с первых лет. Сегодня мы хотим поделиться с вами нашими ожиданиями о рождении нового мира. У нас здесь отличный группой экспертов. Они не молодые. Я не думаю, что они могут считаться молодыми, но я надеюсь, что они будут представлять этот ютфулял дух. Мы не можем обещать вам предсказать будущее. На несколько дней мы обсуждали, что действительно происходит, какие последствия мы могли получить в глобальной политике и международной арене, как и как нам нужно бороться. Я помню, как мне пришлось принять некоторые экзамены для моей доктораты, и один экономист, известный экономист, сказал: «Продолжай изучать. Тебе нужно пройти этот экзамен. Но когда ты закончил этот экзамен, выброси все эти книги о экономике, и через 10 или 20 лет они будут outdatedы». И это действительно происходит. То, что вы изучаете сегодня, может быть не актуально завтра или послезавтра. Это почему все эти дискуссии о том, что будет происходить, как это будет выглядеть, не являются просто теоретическим упражнением. Это то, что вы говорите себе, как behave, как развиваться, чтобы стать частью этого нового мирового порядка. Этот мирный порядок формируется перед нашими глазами. Давайте выберем все книги, потому что они нужны только для наших immediate экзаменов. И мы начнем наши дискуссии с нашего известного политического эксперта, мистера Фёдора Лукьянова, который также является директором исследовательского центра Валдайского клуба. Вы, вероятно, слышали его, или, я уверен, знаете что-то о нем. Фёдор, пожалуйста, постарайтесь. Спасибо. Как директор исследовательского центра Валдайского клуба, позвольте мне сделать официальную заявку, что то, что Пётр Дудкевич сказал о выборе всех книг, не в соответствии с нашей позицией. Мы на самом деле воспринимаем книги. Мы верим, что человек должен читать книги, даже если они outdatedы в плане их практической применения, потому что это ценное понимание того, как мы вшли в эту ситуацию и какие теории и концепции привели нас к текущему состоянию. В Валдайском клубе за последние четыре года это просто произошло так, что мы изучали практически один процесс: что происходит с мировым системой, как former world order является деconstructed и заменена чем-то новым. И, возможно, этот новый системный порядок уже здесь или он в процессе создания. И Пётр сказал, что мы можем увидеть границы, фреймворк этого нового мира, но это как мираж, как иллюзия. Вы думаете, что он там. Когда вы靠近, он исчез в воздухе, и вы все еще видите десерт. И иногда вы действительно靠近, и есть настоящий оазис. Поэтому мы надеемся, что мы двигаемся в направлении такого оазиса. В эти четыре года мы出版ировали четыре репортта, направленных на общую ситуацию в мире. И мы не продолжим этот тему сейчас. Все, что мы могли сказать, изучая эту пересечённую период, мы уже говорили, из-за наших низких интеллектуальных способностей. Но в этом году мы出版ировали репортт, который был обсужден во время этого форума. И это было честью и привилегией для нас, когда министр foreign affairs Сергей Лавров участвовал в этой дискуссии. Это было очень интересно. Как комментаторы, эксперты, исследователи и ученые, мы можем сказать все, что хотим и вдумывать в голове что-то о мировом порядке. И тогда у нас есть эта человек, которая практически в этом процессе вовлечена. Он знает это отнутри, и он может оценить, как наши идеи соответствуют реальности. Мистер Лавров был либо очень смел, либо он видел что-то интересное в нашей презентации. Он согласился, в основном, с нашими конечностями. Репортт состоит из идей, это одно дело, но когда они выражаются элегантными словами, это даже лучше. И есть два термина, которые мы использовали в этом репортте, чтобы сделать это более живым. И эти термины уже использованы, придуманы коллегой, который не в этой комнате, но он работает для Валдайского клуба. Тимофей Бордочев говорил о стратегической фриволите как reflection of the mood that came to the world after the end of the Cold War. Если вы случайно смотрели тв-broadcast нашего вчера встречного с Президентом Путином, то наш норвежский коллега это выразил четко: «После конца Cold War West became the most powerful player in its history». Навсегда до этого West community was so dominating in the world. It lasted for a while, not for too long, for a few years, and then further changes started. But mentally, this has not been overcome yet. So on the one hand, all over the world, we see how the most powerful countries lose this sense of confidence, even in the US, in a variety of forms. Sometimes these forms are scary, sometimes they are funny, in their attempts to find the impact of the Kremlin everywhere, including sending Pokemons to stir up some ethnic or racial tensions in the south of the US. But there's this inertia of a feeling that, yes, we won in that most important battle against the Soviet Union, that was really a powerful adversary, who wasn't just defeated, but they pretty much capitulated. They surrendered. They disappeared. And that gave them the sense that they are absolutely right, which is preserved, that even though reality deny their infallibility. But this inertia is there. And this inertia is there. And it generates this strategic frivolity, this feeling that you can do whatever you want and nothing bad is going to follow. And if it happens, you could disregard it, because the main goal is still more important. In our opinion, it's quite dangerous, because it undermines the most important thing that the global politicians should have. I mean, the sense of self-preservation, understanding that the wrong actions and poorly thought through words and statements may lead to very irrevocable consequences, wars and the like. And you need to do something about it. And little by little, we're moving to a very unpleasant situation, because it's obvious that in the global politics, much like in human relations, words sooner or later have to be supported by deeds or they undermine the authority of those who say these words. Президент Трамп, когда он боролся за власть, он критичил Баррек Обама за опасение ассоциицией с нападением, если они используют химические оружия. Он рисует красную линию. И тогда, когда этот химический атака произошла... Конечно, у нас есть наши разницы в том, кто действительно использует химические оружия, но они думают, что это был ассоциативный. И после этого Обама подумал об этом и решил не делать ничего, что было вполне правильным, в моей точке зрения, с точки зрения глобального развития. Но с точки зрения воспринимания Обамы это было неправильно, потому что лидер великой нации должен, вы знаете, implement what he is promising. И он говорил об этом. Трамп говорил об этом слабом человеке, дискредитируя американскую власть. И он сам опасается Новой Кореи сейчас, и они борются возвращаясь, что типично для Новой Кореи. Но сколько времени можно делать опасения без дела? Без того, пока кто-то решит, что вы просто собака, кричая на дерево. И вы больше не воспринимаете это серьезно. Или вы подчиняетесь вашей опасности. И если вы подчиняетесь вашей опасности в случае с Новой Кореей, это значит, что мир находится на бряде этого ограниченного нукльного конфликта. И это последствия этой стратегической фриволиты, с которой мы сталкиваемся. У нас есть фриволистное название в нашей презентации. Также мы borrowed it from Oscar Wilde. Была эта презентация «The importance of being earnest». Если Оскар Вайлд использовал это как название для своего довольно веселого剧本 «From the life of London aristocracy». Мы здесь处理яем гораздо более влиятельных актеров. И в их случае такая беззаботность является чем-то, что не может быть permitted. И мы стараемся показать это, потому что время для шуток закончилось. Мы действительно можем попасть в ситуацию, когда, конечно, никто не хочет большой войны. Не существует сумасшедших в мире, которые действительно хотят войны. Но даже если мы не хотим войны, как история提醒 us, мы могли бы на самом деле попасть туда, шаг за шагом. И вторая notion, которая стала довольно популярной и использована журналистами... Мы, возможно, погибли слишком далеко, когда мы написали там, что глобальная политика превратилась в такой wild cabaret. И никто не был сосредоточен на самопредставлении, но без думать, что это может привести. Потому что это может быть, хорошо, это может быть преувеличение, но недостаток серьезности и понимания этого причинно-эффектного связана между действиями и их последствиями. Мы все были учены с детства. Когда вы говорите «A», вы должны sooner or later say «B», как две буквы в алфавите. Но в современном мире они похожи на то, что вы можете сказать «A» forever, и не будет «B», ни следующего шага. Если мы вернемся к вчера встречному встречному, Президент Путин's worldview, вы можете нравиться ему или нет, вы можете его поделить или нет, вы можете интерпретировать его заявления по-другому. Но это всегда было типичным для него. И он подтвердила это в своем вчера презентации. Он знает для sure этот причинно-эффектный связанный. Если вы нажимаете на кнопку, вы получаете результат. И он продолжает нас его это упоминать. Он говорил в детали вчера о Каталонском случае. И он продолжал говорить: «И что вы хотели? Если в прошлом вы думали, что территориальная целостность не имеет значения, и внезапно вы так удивлены?» И это, в моей точке зрения, очень важная характеристика, которую нужны многие мировые лидеры. Но это кажется очевидным. Почему даже нужно это учить? Мы живем в мире, где очевидное превращается в improbable, и мы должны вернуться к реальности. Спасибо. Спасибо, Фёдор. Конечно, это была шутка о выборе всех книг. И мы собираемся писать новые книги с помощью Валдайского клуба. Многие из вас, в своей жизни в этом фестивале, конечно, вы могли пропустить президенциальную речь. И эта конкретная сессия была модерирована Фёдором Лукьяновым вчера ночью. Позвольте мне спросить вас, что вы помните в вчера презентациях, не только Президент Путин, но и другие панелесты, которые были там. Это была довольно необычная композиция экспертов. Это было нашим экспериментальным решением. Мы планировали в таком виде, чтобы у нас было former президент Афганистана, мистер Карзай, Джек Ма, основатель Алибаба, и Астле Тойя из норвежского исследовательского института. Если мы говорим о будущем, и мы сейчас стараемся говорить о будущем, будущее是由 очень разных сегментов общества建造的. Хамид Карзай - politician, который used to lead the country of Afghanistan, with some problems, to put it mildly. И он получил эту уникальную опытность. Не то, что вы можете использовать афганическую опыт elsewhere, но хотя бы вы definitively become wiser. И он stayed in that position for 10 years. He survived politically and physically. Джек Ма - great representative of both business and show business. He speaks eloquently, he speaks a lot, and he is a good inspirational talker. But no matter how you view him, there's this huge company that he built from scratch. And this kind of global business, this global business with some clear and unforgettable national roots. This is a global company that could not exist without China. That's very important, because one of the problems of the modern world that we see in the West and in the East is this gap between political and business elite and their roots. If Alibaba does that, they will disappear. And Mr. Asli Toye, from the Norwegian Nobel Prize Institute, actually. And we invited him because of the latest developments in terms of the Nobel Prize. And I respect that prize, because this is a very interesting indicator of the global political atmosphere. The decisions that are made, they may look strange, you may disagree with them or not, but they show you the average situation in the world. There was this interesting dialogue between Putin and Mr. Toye and the audience about getting rid of nuclear weapons. And the President said, of course, we will abandon nuclear weapons, but later.
Our next speaker is Anatole Leven. He is the person of the future in all respects, in intellectual, mostly intellectually. He is a professor of Georgetown University in Washington. And he is concurrently a professor with Qatari University. Anatole will be speaking in English, as far as I understand.
Спасибо очень. Я надеюсь, что время для шуток не закончилось. Я часто чувствовал, что во время долгих периодов единственное, что держало Россию двигаться, было ее чувство смеха. One of my favorite Russian jokes relates to the difference between a Russian optimist and a Russian pessimist. The Russian optimist says, "Things are so bad, they couldn't possibly get worse." The Russian pessimist says, "No, they could get worse." As will be apparent from my talk, I am firmly on the side of the Russian pessimists. This talk is not intended to make you feel more cheerful about your futures. Because it does seem to me, and this is something that I very much welcomed and enjoyed at the Valdi this year, was precisely that we talked about the much bigger, deeper, longer and greater challenges facing humanity. And frankly, I mean, in the face of these challenges, it's not just the geopolitical behavior of the West since the Cold War, which appears frivolous. It is a very, very large part of our present preoccupations. I mean, to give you an example, I live in the Gulf now, I'm based in Qatar. And Qatar is under boycott by several of its neighbors, Saudi Arabia, UAE, Bahrain, as part of their, well, various agendas, anti-Iranian agendas, anti-democratic agendas, and so forth and so on. And these local geopolitical ideological issues obviously dominate, overwhelmingly dominate now the discussion of the area, both in the area itself, but also in the West. Meanwhile, not much noticed, a few months back, a report, in fact, two reports came out, suggesting that in 100 years' time, the Gulf region may very well be uninhabitable by human beings, and for that matter, most animals, as a result of climate change. Not just the increase in heat, but the increase in humidity, because, of course, this is on the Gulf, will prevent human life in the Persian Gulf. Can you imagine? Well, of course, historians in the Gulf itself won't have anything to say about our present preoccupations, because there won't be any. Elsewhere in the world, if historians survive, can you imagine what they're going to say about the sort of things we're discussing today in the context of the real threat from climate change? It seems to me, I said this at the Valdi, that our descendants, well, you, perhaps, your children, will look back on my generation with some of the same mixture of incomprehension and contempt with which we today look back on the generation of 1914, that led Europe into the First World War. Basically, how can they have been so stupid as to mistake the petty geopolitical issues that divided them and led to the war for the real dangers threatening their societies from within? Now, I have to say, I think everyone of my generation, let's say, everyone born in the 1950s and 60s in the West, and in a number of other places as well, perhaps, should really thank their maker every morning and evening for the fact that they were born when and where we were. It's said that the whole of human civilization has emerged during the past 12,000 years or so in an unusually mild interglacial. That's the way I feel about myself. I'm incredibly lucky to be born when I was. Not before, when I might have been killed in the First World War or the Second World War, or disappeared into a concentration camp, or, of course, simply died of an infection for lack of antibiotics or died of shock as a result of an operation. But also I fear, perhaps, not born afterwards. For those people who were born in the 1890s, before they were as old as I am today, if they were in Europe, they would have gone through the First World War. If they were in Russia, the Revolution, the Second World War, the purges in Russia, the Great Terror, and regimes of a degree of horror that I think in 1914 almost nobody could have imagined. The worst imaginings of people in early 1914 about the future would have fallen short of the reality in Eastern Europe of a choice between Hitler and Stalin. So once again, the Russian pessimist, things can always get worse. But of course, this period, the first half of the 20th century, was also a period of tremendous technological advance and of inventions which were of tremendous benefit to humanity. It was the period, of course, in which mankind learned to fly. And it was the period in which we discovered antibiotics, perhaps the greatest single benefit to mankind for a while that we have ever discovered. Of course, the first thing that they used airplanes for on a large scale was to bomb people during the First World War. And the first large-scale use of antibiotics was to treat the wounded during the Second World War. One of the things about this mild interglacial in which I have lived is precisely that it was the period of successful antibiotics. As is pretty well known, this is now running out, because largely through our own foolishness we have overused them to the point where they are ceasing to be effective. And so, perhaps, God forbid, we are returning to the era before antibiotics, which wasn't nearly so much fun. Now, the next decades too, the decades in which you live, will be decades of tremendous technological invention and discovery, many aspects of it, of great benefit to humanity. But these advances will bring with them, are already bringing with them, colossal challenges. And there is a paradox about meeting these challenges, which I think is very relevant to this international meeting of youth today, which is that these are global challenges and they need to be met with a sense of global responsibility. And yet, the actions that need to be taken, and of course, one needs global agreements, global coordination and cooperation, but the actions that will need to be taken will have to be taken by strong national states. And one of the things I would say to everyone in this room is, please don't mix up global responsibility, which is essential and essential duty for us all, an imperative of survival for the human race. Don't mix up global responsibility with what I regard as an idiotic phrase, global citizenship. There is no such thing as global citizenship. Global government does not exist. Nobody can elect a global parliament. There is no global police. There is no global health service. For all these benefits, everything that we depend on for civilized life is provided in the end by local states. And these states have to feel responsibility for the people in particular places. A sense of global responsibility is great. This talk of global citizenship can become, to put it bluntly, a money launderer's charter, whereby you're not committed to anywhere, you move your money into the Cayman Islands, you know, or whatever, and you feel no responsibility to any particular society or set of people. You may give small amounts of money to global causes, but that ain't the same thing as paying taxes for the maintenance of a solid and civilized local state. So that's the first thing I wanted to say. Challenges. The first challenge is also inequality. And this we can see already, the way in which a combination, of course, of deindustrialization, financialization, but also automation, technological change, is destroying jobs. Initially in the West, but there are now real worries about this doing the same thing in India, Africa, and elsewhere. So essentially, automation and computerization eating up not just existing jobs, but eating up future jobs as well. And I have to say, when I heard the talk by Jack Ma yesterday, I thought, "God help most of humanity." You know, the people who can clamber on that particular bandwagon will do fine, but it won't be most people. So we have to think about how to meet this challenge in terms of maintaining basic social equality. And there are various ideas about this which came up at the Valdi, including universal basic incomes. The second thing, I already alluded to in my remarks about the Persian Gulf, is obviously the challenge of climate change and what to do about it. Climate change is an existential threat to modern civilization as a whole. Even limited predictions are liable to set off enormous waves of migration, undermining existing or destroying existing states and societies. The more pessimistic predictions for climate change will end modern civilization or possibly humanity itself. This is what you will have to deal with in the decades to come. I thank God, won't be here for very much longer. Спасибо.
Спасибо, Анатолий.
I think you got Anatole's idea. He's not a pessimist, he's an ironist who's looking into the future, and he doesn't like what he sees. So I have a question for you, Anatole. In just, in one phrase, what would you recommend those who were unlucky, who were not lucky enough to be born 60 years ago?
Well, as I say, I mean, I think you need to cultivate a sense of responsibility for the world, but also for the societies in which you live. Questions of solidarity, of human solidarity, are going to be critical. We have, to some extent, forgotten this in recent decades, partly because of a belief which has quite simply proved untrue, that if the rich get richer, everybody else will be lifted up and will benefit. This has simply not been the case, at least in China perhaps, but certainly not in the United States and the West. So a feeling of responsibility for your fellow citizens and solidarity in society. The other thing, of course, is that this will require, I think, some fundamental changes in how we have been doing things. And frivolity again, I mean, the institutions which dominate, you know, much of the world today are just not fitted to meet the kind of challenges that, you know, that we will face in future. Security institutions, but also, you know, a good deal of the democratisation ideas will seem, I think, fairly irrelevant 50 or 100 years down the line. And so I would say, you will have to create new institutions for yourself, you know. Don't simply move into the ones that my generation has created, they may not be much use to you.
Спасибо, Анатолий. Thank you, Anatole. Федор Лукьянов? Well, I would like to... Шилян is his next speaker, yes. I would like to draw the audience's attention. We are going to have Sheng Shi Liang. Please follow his presentation very closely, because if there were any treasure troves of wisdom in the Valdai Club, he is the one. So those, all of you who can speak Russian, please, you can follow his presentation, you can learn some Russian from him, because we can't really speak Russian as eloquently as he does. Thank you. Федор almost introduced our, has almost introduced our third speaker, Sheng Shi Liang. He is a leading research fellow at the centre, at the Research Centre of the Sichuan Information Agency. Our topic today, we're talking about future, and Anatole also talked about the past and how it affects the future. So, Sheng Shi Liang, I think in his person will have a merger of future and past, and the fact that in his person, the future and past is merged makes him a unique person. He is a unique person in terms of his intellect, in terms of his culture. So I would like to ask him to share his thoughts with you. Thank you. Dear girls and boys, dear friends, I'll be speaking not as a scientist, but as a participant in the festival. The thing is that 60 years ago, there was a world festival of youth and students in Moscow, and 60 years ago, all Chinese young people wanted to attend that festival, but only hundreds of them could do that. I was not lucky enough to attend the Moscow festival. 60 years later, and now I'm a 75-year-old young person, I'm happy to be addressing So my dream has come true, and I can participate. And 60 years ago, the world was a simple one. The world was split into two camps, into two parts. A socialist camp headed by the Soviet Union, the stronghold of peace, the camp fighting for the right cause, and the opposing camp, the capitalistic camp, the war mongers fighting for the cause of war. And we were operating in very simple stereotypes, we were living in a black and white world. And I remember very well that in our hallway in school, there was a poster saying, "The Soviet Union of today is China of tomorrow." And 60 years ago, the festival was a great success. It was a grandiose event. Back then, we young Chinese people, we thought that we were seeing the bright future of communism shimmering on the horizon. Well, that wasn't the case. Soon after that, there was a split in the socialist camp. At that time, I didn't know that the leaders of China had already fallen off with the Soviet leaders, but I was, at that time, since I was politically, I was politically immature, I decided to study Russian language and literature after school. And at that time, 100 young people went to study Russian language and literature, but the relations were already different. And after we, after the graduation, among those 100 young people, only 10 continued using Russian language. I was one of those 10. But I was the only lucky one to use the Russian language throughout my entire life. I'm the only humble servant of yours who has been doing this. So even though the world was a simple one back then, not as complex as it is now, I think the world has grown better, has grown flatter. The world has become indivisible, and security has become indivisible as well. And human destiny, the future of people also has become indivisible. Recently, our leaders have introduced a notion, a society of joint destiny, a society of joint future of the whole world. So we share destiny, we share future. This year, we're marking two jubilees. The first jubilee, I already mentioned, the 60th anniversary of the Fourth World Festival in Moscow. The second jubilee is the 100th anniversary of the Russian Revolution. And at the Valdai Forum, we discussed it in detail. There are different views about the revolution, very diverging views, but in any case, the Russian Revolution had a very strong positive impact on China. Our former late chairman Mao Zedong said that the salvage of the October Revolution brought Marxism-Leninism to China. I think it also brought a more progressive, more advanced social economic order. It brought modern world to China. Four years after the Russian Revolution, we created the Communist Party of China. After that, the Chinese prevailed over the Japanese during the war, and they prevailed in the New Democratic Revolution. And China was turning from a poor country, was turning into a more prosperous country.
Now, we have our 19th Congress of our Communist Party, and this task was set. By 2021, we plan to do away with poverty, so there's no one who is below the poverty line. And our second goal, to celebrate 100th anniversary or centennial of establishing the Communist Party, the Chinese will be living thus, like those who live in the developed world. I may not see this bright future personally. To me, these two jubilees, these two anniversaries are closely connected with my own life. In the past, China was really a poor country, people starved. And now, they suffer from overeating, from obesity. Of course, it's better to die of obesity than of starvation, I would argue here. My final thought, let me add my brief presentation by quoting Mao Zedong, Chairman Mao Zedong, who was actually speaking at the Moscow State University 60 years ago. He said, "The world belongs to us and to you, but in a final analysis, the world is yours. You're young, you're energetic, you're advanced, and the hope of the world is in you. Your task is to build the new world without conflicts and with responsibility." Thank you. Do not overeat, that's the most important idea. Thank you, Sheng Shi Liang. There's this good American proverb, "Do not remind a tiger that it's a tiger." You probably understand what China is from the presentation of Sheng Shi Liang. I'm glad that you connected this past to the future. We will not remind you that you, China, is a tiger. We'll keep quiet, and everything will be fine. Thank you. We invited one other expert, Alexander Rar, a research fellow and observer, and a very active person in German politics. Alexander Rar is one of those people who play an important role in European politics and in German politics, in the sense that he was always trying to establish connections between Russia and Germany. Peter, our great leader and chairman, thank you for introducing us so nicely. I'm really glad to be here in this room. I used to see this room in 2014 on TV, when the Winter Olympics was organised here. I'm looking forward to the World Cup, where most, where some of the best football players will be speaking here because of the World Cup and Russia. After your Olympic Games in 2014, after your festival, that World Cup will be another important event that will show to all of us what an open country Russia is, and how we, as Europe, are open to Russia. And we hope there'll be some changes in that. After my colleagues' presentations, and they were talking about the catastrophic mistakes that were made by our ancestors in understanding the world they lived in and our future, perhaps we could all go to the, back to your seats, and you could go back and come to the podium here, and you give us advice on what mistakes not to make. So my presentations are going to be like coast riding, going up and down. And we had these Valdai discussions, including, for several days, including three-hour talk with the president, he wasn't just reading some notes that were prepared for him, he was openly and sincerely answering some questions. Not all of those questions were that pleasant. As for Germany, you could say that over Germany, they'll be shining the sun of Jamaica. We will have this very interesting coalition consisting of four parties, and their colours combined look like the flag of Jamaica. And they believe that democracy is sexy, and you may start doing it in this nice way. We will have to rebuild, redesign the world, or keep it the way it is, observing the status quo, and all those nice packages that we have, we'll see, and it's going to be important. This coalition seemed unreal a few months ago, they were in so much conflict. Let's see how they will be able to coexist in this most powerful country of Europe, how they will be able to form a working government and influencing the policy of Europe. Of course, we are facing enormous challenges. The world is turning into a multipolar world. Those who don't understand it make a mistake, but we get more and more so-called black swans. You know how swans are usually white, and when there's a black swan, you understand something is wrong. And we get this constant stream of black swans, something is always wrong. We focused on 10 terrible conflicts at Valdai, let me describe them to you. The climate change is one. If countries are not together, it may come out of control. In Europe, we face a huge challenge of mass migration, how to stop it. It is going to be impossible for Europe to completely shut their borders, they will have to learn to live with these migration flows for the first time in my life. There's a real danger of a nuclear strike in the Korean Peninsula. I don't even remember, even during the Cuban crisis, we did not have anything similar. Nobody understands how they are going to develop the relations between Europe and the US, where they have this extraordinary president in the US who is trying to fight against the elite, and trying to get more and more power in the world. And of course, there's a schism in the EU between the rich countries of the north and the countries of the south, between very liberal Europe in the West, trying to preserve the liberal sister. between very liberal Europe in the West, trying to preserve the liberal sister system in Europe or East European countries like Poland and Hungary, where they understand democracy differently in so many issues and how to prevent this split, this schism. Even a larger, bigger problem is this disintegration of the Middle East. How they are trying to establish the Kurdish state? How the Iranian nuclear problem has not been resolved? We see the disintegration of Iraq and in a sense Syria, even there, it's perhaps most stable. All these dangerous things are happening. And there are many different problems that we deal with. I don't recall and there may be ten of them. Now we see terrorism in Europe. We never had this in Europe. We had some terrorism in Germany, in England thirty, forty years ago, but it was not as significant as it is now when a person can get a truck and kill ten or twenty people in the streets. There's a big danger that the conflict in Ukraine will not be resolved and a big war will start there. Not just between Ukraine and Ukrainian forces and separatists, but other forces that may be involved in the conflict. It's a little uncomfortable that there is a problem that could have been resolved, but it is not resolved because there are other geopolitical interests behind it. And of course, the problem of Africa that we keep forgetting sometimes. It's connected with the climate change and many other problems in Africa. Pretty soon in Africa, there'll be more than a billion residents and they have younger generation there. What will they try to do? They will try to migrate to the North from Africa. There's this huge challenge and we had this very interesting discussion with Herman Graf, as Burbank CEO, about how new technologies are going to change the world in the upcoming years, not just decades. This challenge of industrial revolution four point zero is quite serious. Why? Because technological progress is moving forward so fast that the minds of humans cannot catch up with what they can do with those technologies. We may have some cyber wars and the new weapon types, not just positive developments in that field. And we need to learn how to live with it and work with it. We've had some, an interesting dialogue and it's good that we actually had a dialogue. To be honest with you, in Germany and in Europe, I attend conferences. There's no dialogue there. They are trying to talk about the same thing. When there's a pro-Russian point of view or some point of view from the from outside Europe, they immediately declare this person that he is a propaganda agent. But in this world, we need to talk about it. And I would like the to avoid turning democracy into stagnation like what happened in the Soviet Union because the communist idea did not develop in the Soviet Union after World War Two. Democracy is not in a stalemate, but it has to be developed. It has to be developed together with the rest of the planet, with also those challenges and chances that a new life is giving us. Industrialization four point zero, and there was an interesting phrase used in our discussion, going back to the problems of the previous generation, that the first industrialization at the end of the nineteenth century. I'm almost done here. And digitalization may also lead the world to something more dangerous and that's what we need to think about. I still, I think we still have a chance that we have three stabilizing factors in this world. There's no open military confrontation between between major powers. North Korea is not a major power in this sense and we have the UN still and all leading countries of the world have some kind of democracy, even in China, where we cannot say that where they have dictatorship, there are many people who make the decision and it's in the common context of global politics. Thank you. Alexander, in one phrase, what is your advice for the relations between Russia and Europe? What needs to be done? How now shall we live? One phrase, one long phrase, the only way out is to find a common understanding that Europe will go from the Atlantic Ocean to the Pacific Ocean. When after the Cold War, we were dealing with after Second World War, we were dealing with Germany, it was integrated into this common Europe, even though it had conflicts with all these countries, it worked. Why can't we build a similar system with Russia, which didn't have that many wars with Europe? It was Germany or France that were trying to attack Russia. So this is what we need to do. We need to change mentality and think about wider Europe. If you listen to what my colleagues had to say, you could come to two conclusions. All these processes that we were discussing here, they generate two things, a lack of trust. People, leaders distrust one another, not like in the past. They could give each other phone calls and they knew that something would follow. Mistrust is not just a psychological phenomenon. It's also political and economic phenomenon. If there's no if there's no trust, there's nothing to build relations on. And second of all, it generates fear. It's not just that we are trying to scare people with something. This fear is of political nature. Our political actions are now based on fear. The entire security policy, anti-terrorism policy is based on fear. Our migration fear is based on fear. And when you have fear, where you have no logic, only emotions and politics becomes unpredictable also because there's no trust and fear. They begin to influence us and it's stronger than our mind or so it seems to be. So that's a challenge to you. You are young and you are here to build trust between each other for different countries, different nations, different colors of your skin and so on. And use it and you have no fear. Don't think that you cannot do things that you can dream of. Shen Shiliang never even dreamt about being at such a youth festival sixty years ago. And his dreams came true, no matter how long we will try to live. Do what you think is best. Thank you. We were told by the organizers that we need to free up this room at 1:20. I'm not sure if we have time for any questions. Perhaps let's take two questions. We'll be pleased to take them. We started late, but we need to finish on time. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Let me introduce myself, Mansur Adamov. Here I represent the delegation of the Russian Committee on Solidarity and Cooperation. And we are the successor of the Soviet Committee of that nature. This is our third festival. Third festival in the Russian Federation. And we take part in it.
So I would like to thank the Valdai Club for having come here, for doing your work. I, when I'm in Moscow, when in Moscow, I occasionally visit your sessions. I have three questions. I'll try to do it quickly. Are we still on the verge of entering the new world or have we already entered the new world? Second question, are we going to have a new financial or political system? And Alexander Rar said that the UN might be reformed. It's still working, but he said that should be reformed. Is it a possibility? Thank you. The second question, let's let's give a chance to ask the second question, then we'll answer questions from two people. Please introduce yourself and then your question. Very quickly. We're very thankful for giving me this chance to ask a question. Ramon Plutaev. I represent the Imperial Orthodox Educational Society. We are championing the interests of Orthodox Christians in the Middle East. The role of NPOs in shaping the world tomorrow, do you think they will have to play an important role? We see that the role of UN, UNESCO, other institutions, we see it's being degraded, it's being devalued. And the world order that was created after World War Two is falling apart right before our eyes, do you think? Okay, and the third final question.
And I'm from Ghana, but a student at the Russian International Olympic University. I have two questions, one for Professor Alexander Rar. You say that new technologies are changing this world. And also the next problem, the major problem actually is Africans leaving their country and coming to Europe. But I'd want to ask you, these technologies, when they are actually activated, they would cause unemployment. So obviously, if these machines take over and there's no jobs, certainly the Africans will move. So what's your take on that? And the second to Professor Anatole, you say that in about fifty to hundred years, the Gulf States would be inhabitable. So what do you think will be the best way? Is it that they would also have to migrate and seek safety other way, in other places? Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's time for a very short responses. I am not sure who will start. Probably Anatoli and then each of us.
Concerning the Gulf States, the point was, this was a prediction if we fail to prevent climate change. So obviously, the answer is we must do our utmost. Well, we can't prevent it now, but to limit its effects. And this is in our hands. We do have, or you have the capability to do that in the years to come. And but if we fail, then indeed the consequences will be disastrous and large numbers of people will move. I should stress that this will obviously not just be a problem for the West. Every society will be affected. One of the most affected areas will be South Asia, obviously, because Bangladesh and the lower-lying areas of South Asia as a whole are, you know, in the most danger, of course, from flooding. So I would say this is the biggest, the biggest threat facing humanity. Just one, may I make one, one comment that came up, a prediction. Genetic engineering obviously has tremendous benefits for humanity, but it could also widen the gap between rich and poor to the point where almost the prediction of H.G. Wells becomes true and we become different species. One of the predictions, but even before that, that came up at the Valdai, for those of you who are on your mobile phones at the moment, is that if this goes on for a hundred years, your heads will gradually sink into your bodies until you're like, you know, something out of The Travels of Marco Polo, you know, with your faces looking out of your stomachs and your chest will get broader and broader. I don't recall whether then you'll become covered with fur as well, but this is the general direction in which you're going, if you don't take some time off your mobile phones during the day. Thank you.
Very short. Present UN, at least the Security Council doesn't represent the multiplicity of the world anymore. It represents the old Yalta Order. What do I mean? Of course, and this is common sense, I think, that African continent, Asia and Latin America should be much more represented at the top of this organization. My hope is, my sincere hope is, although it's a little bit naive maybe to think this way, that the G20, forget the G7, forget that, it's only the West, but the G20 will develop certain kind of forms, of structures in order to concretely deal with the challenges of mankind. And the second question, your question, yes, this is a big, big challenge, the autonomization of the economies. The danger is being seen and understood, but there is, there are no ways how to fight it. My guess is that the question how to sustain or whether democracy should be sustained, as discussed today in the West, will not be the top question of the future. Top question of the mankind of the future will be, how could we sustain social justice in the societies? How can we create jobs? How can we close the gap between rich and poor?
Thank you. The final words, I would like to give the floor to the chairman, the research, chairman of the research section of the Valdai Club, or our direct boss, to put it simply. First of all, I would like to thank you for having invited us to this event. Federer, the floor is yours. Research director, it sounds very interesting. We recently elected academic director, research director in the Russian Academy of Sciences. So please don't put me on the collision course with him. The question is whether whether it's still an old order, whether we're entering a new order. Fortunately, fortunately to stress, there is no strict delineation. If there was, you know, a strictly defined border, the old is over, the new is in, that would have meant that we would have had to undergo and face a war, a major war, because previously world order changes followed major wars. Thank God, no major war has happened since the Cold War. There is a risk of it, but hasn't materialized yet. So you can say that we turned the leaf, we turned the page. Now we're living in a new world. As one of our colleagues said, and it's put in the report, he wrote that the new order is growing through the old order and it will be accompanied by conflicts, hopefully not fatal ones. And this brings us to the UN issue. Do we need UN reform? Yes, we do. Does the UN reflect the world order of today? No, it doesn't. Is it possible to reform the UN now? No, it's not possible. We need to be realistic. Not a single country with privileges. There are five council, Security Council members. They enjoy privileges which others don't have. And not a single country will will cede those privileges. It would be stupid to expect. Putin yesterday said, after the Cold War, we had opened up everything, we'd given away everything we wanted to reciprocity, but it never materialized. So the current structure is not subject to reform because we need consensus for that. There will be no consensus. But there is a real danger because already now numerous world nations, the General Assembly, they are getting really irritated. It has nothing to do with their political orientation. So they're asking themselves a question, why on earth, how come these five countries are still those countries that have given themselves these privileges fifty years ago for obvious reasons? Why they're still enjoying these privileges and we are denied those privileges? And this is a very acute issue. It will be thrown in the spotlight and but we'll need to look for answers and that's how the new world will be shaping up. It's a great pleasure to be, if you still like our faces, if you still have some questions, five minutes from now, we'll have a briefing in a small briefing room and it will be a briefing room and it will be a follow-up to this meeting. Thank you.